Sorry. Good evening. It's now 6:00 PM on April 1st, 2024. Welcome to the Series Planning Commission meeting. Public comments via Zoom have been suspended. Public comment during the meeting must be made in person. Members of the public may still view the meeting via Zoom. At this time, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Condit.
Here.
Commissioner Del Naro.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Vice Chair Catchel.
Here.
Chairperson Otero.
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Conflict of Interest Declaration. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to declare a conflict of interest? No? Moving on, Citizen Communications. To the Commission on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the Commission welcomes and encourages participation in Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Citizens are entitled to address the Planning Commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any matter not included on the agenda? If so, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing none? Moving on to Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is required, that particular item will be removed from the Consent Calendar and will be considered separately. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion? None? Is there anyone in the public that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion? Not seeing any? The items on Consent Calendar. Number one, Clerk's Report of Posting. Number two, Approval of Minutes. And number three, 24-05 Site Plan Approval. Proposal for a site plan approval for a recycling business to place 160-square-foot container to collect recycling with an awning and table using approximately 350 square feet total with the operation hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days per week. One to two employees will be attending to the recycling customers. Leo Villarrealis is the applicant. The secret status is exempt. Required action adopt PC Resolution Number 24-10. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Condit.
Aye.
Commissioner Del Naro.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Catchel.
Aye.
Chairperson Otero.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Moving on to public hearings. The first one is item number four, 24-02. A specific plan, site plan. Proposal for a specific plan, site plan entitlement request to construct a 2,623-square-foot building for a Panda Express restaurant with dual drive-through lanes, landscaping, trash enclosure, and pedestrian path of travel in the Series Gateway Center. Panda Express Derrick Knight is the applicant. The secret status is exempt per Section 15332. Required action, adopt PC Resolution Number 24-09. Can we get the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This presentation is for Panda Express, application number 24-02. A specific plan, site plan. 24-02, site, specific plan, site plan is to construct a 2,623-square-foot Panda Express restaurant with dual drive-in lanes, drive-through lanes, in the southernmost parcel in the Series Gateway Center. This is the aerial vicinity map showing the project area. So it's that very last parcel in Gateway that hasn't been developed yet. The project site is zoned regional commercial. The project site has the general plan designation of regional commercial as well. The Panda Express will be occupying the remaining vacant parcel in Gateway. So it's surrounded there. Just to the north of it is going to be a 76 gas station and Nick the Greek, still in construction, it hasn't opened yet. And there's this Starbucks and Popeyes and In-N-Out. To the west is the Wood Springs Hotel that is still under construction and the tractor supply that has already opened. And to the east is still vacant regional commercial. This is the site plan showing the dual drive-throughs, which is, Greg's Panda always has a long drive-through line, so having to... Yeah, amazing. These are the proposed elevations for the Panda Express. It is consistent with the Mitchell Road corridor specific plan and the Gateway Center. The proposed landscaping is also consistent with the Mitchell Road corridor specific plan and the Gateway Center as well. Staff recommends to make the determination that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15332 in Field Development Projects and to approve 24-02 Specific Plan, Site Plan subject to the findings and conditions contained in the attached draft resolution PC 24-09. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Teddy. Does the Commission have any questions or comments for staff? The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? And did we also, did we receive any items on this? I mean, any emails on this item? No? Okay. I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment?
My name is Bruce LaRosa, President of CRM Architect. Again, my name is Bruce LaRosa, President of CRM Architect. Here is a project. Questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. It's kind of a question to, I guess, you and city staff, but dual drive-through lanes. Popeyes has similar setup and I think Habit well, and they're not in use. With that, just on the business? Is this going to be used as a dual drive-through lane?
I believe it's up to the demand of the business if they decide to have both open or not.
Okay. Right.
Any other questions?
I've got a question. I don't, this might be for staff, it might be for you too. As I'm looking at this on page 25, I see... It's a little crowded in here. Where would one park if they were going to go inside and eat? You have the, and for the staff, do we have a minimum number of parking spaces for...
There are parking spaces there on site. I believe there's...
Nineteen.
Nineteen, plus the hotel is right across, which will have additional.
This, I think, there, this is the gas station we talked about? Going to be connected to it or off?
No, that's on Whitmore. This is...
Okay.
This directly north to the Panda is currently a 76 gas station being built.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to step up to the podium? The public hearing is now closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I am Michael Cadell. I'm also from Panda Express and thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. If you have any questions. I'm more of the construction side, not as much operations, but I can help answer anything you need.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other public comment?
Genically curious. Put that back up. With all these businesses being there, parking, hotel there. How they, I mean, is there enough parking for everyone? Can't find a parking spot. Some people might get out and walk. Thinking it might be some conflict with some of the other businesses there, hotels, where people might park there, renting room tenants. That you would...
Is there any other public comment? The public hearing is now closed. I'll bring it back to the Commission for any discussion and questions.
Out there yesterday, property in general, parking seems to be scattered between. Don't know how that was laid out or how it decided to business. Overall, the department, project, standards. No parking of that. Great big lot right next to it. Got to walk around a little while I was out there. And to answer your question, the overall parking on the site, lies with the ordinance. Digital site designs were done separately. I'm sure they meet their minimum requirements as well, but there's overall parking on the site. That's my assumption.
Right. That's, yes. There's a large parking area between traffic, tractor supply and Wood Springs, which is, that's all overflow for everybody.
Large area south. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up to Teddy. What's the border of this property look like? Is there fencing at all?
To the south of the property, along the freeway line.
Yeah, closer to the freeway.
Yes, there will be.
Does Commission have any other questions or comments? Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second option.
Okay. Commissioner Condit. Commissioner Del Naro.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Catchel.
Aye.
Chairperson Otero.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Moving along. Moving along to item number five. Conditional Use Permit. Proposal for a conditional use permit entitlement to relocate the existing Heaven Snow Building from the southwest portion of the parking lot to the northeast portion of the parking lot located at 2,000 Central Avenue to allow a drive-through window and drive-through lane to hold up to three vehicles. Violet Seva is the applicant. CEQA status is exempt per Section 15332. The required action is to adopt PC Resolution 24-11. Can I get a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This presentation is for the Heaven Snow, application number 24-03, conditional use permit. 24-03 is a conditional use permit entitlement requesting to relocate the existing Heaven Snow Building from the southwest portion of the parking lot to the northeast portion of the parking lot nearest to Caswell Avenue to allow a drive-through window and to hold up to three vehicles in the drive-through. This project is located at the southeast corner of Central Avenue and Caswell Avenue. This is the aerial vicinity map showing the project area. The project site is zoned neighborhood commercial. The project site has the general plan designation of neighborhood commercials. The surrounding properties are zoned neighborhood commercial and outside the neighborhood commercial is residential. So here's the site plan showing the building relocating. So the star is the existing location there in the southwest portion of the parking lot and they are proposing to relocate up to where the rectangle is in the northeastern portion of the parking lot. And then the three arrows represent the three vehicles that could drive up to the window to, um, like be serviced at the window and then the two vehicles waiting in line behind it. And it's proposed this way, so the vehicles are lined up in the parking lots and not blocking any of the driveways for vehicles to get in and out. And the, also is opening up the front of the store, so all the parking in the front of the store is now going to be available. And the applicant has already spoke with TID about getting power from the building to... There's a pole right next to where they're proposing to relocate. So it'll be an overhead line brought down on the pole to the building. So it will no longer be running across the parking lot. Staff recommends to make the determination that this project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15332 in Field Development Projects and to approve 24-03 Conditional Use Permit subject to the findings and conditions contained in the attached draft resolution PC 24-11. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Commission have any questions for staff?
I do. I'm still on the parking theme, I suppose. These three parking spots or more, whatever, to accommodate the cars, that affect the, for the store there? That affect its allotment of parking spaces?
No, the store itself has more than the required amount of spaces they need for their store. So the Heaven Snow using parking spaces where the building is going to be at and then like the parking spaces for walk-up customers still leave the store with plenty of parking.
Looks like it may as well. Go up the plot plan.
Okay. Traffic for the shack will be moving from west to east. They'll be entering off of Central out of Caswell. The way the arrows are showing, have cars facing east, potentially blocking cars coming from the east off of Caswell, heading west. You're also going to be having cars backed up in front of, it looks like, one, two, three, five to six parking spaces along the north edge of the property. I don't know how often there would be three cars backed up there. Probably unusual. But I understand why they need three. I'm just concerned we're trying to put too much into little space and creating potential issues of cars. If I'm coming west off of Caswell and I turn in there, the parking lot, I got cars facing the other way, right at me, and I can't park the ones along the north side of the building because they're facing the other direction. Those need to be restriped, I don't know. I don't think this works, what I'm, what the solution is necessarily. I have another issue, I'll get to that after. Great operationally. This liability is in there, vendor benders and whatnot that bother me. We're also showing the shack located right at the property line. Shit's back about 12 from the property line. I don't know if this green represents that awninged area or just the shack itself. The shape is not quite accurate and maybe the awning is going to be moved. Side. Sun point. Yes, I, I, I'm just a little frustrated with the lack of a better site plan. Is, where the parking, I think it probably needs to be striped, lined and maybe re-stripe those spaces along the, uh, north side of the building. I, I'm not sure. And change, I, I just don't know. I understand they think, it looks like a pretty simple change, just flop it over there, get a little backup space and all that, but operationally, hasn't... Can't see how it works. As long as I'm on the issue safety, the other issue I have is currently the shack, and this is the same objection I had when it came to us. Hasn't changed at all. This is still a, basically a wooden box sitting on a metal. Attached to anything that I know. I went around Series yesterday and I looked at pretty much all our new, a good sampling of our new and old drive-in, drive-through facilities. That's why I was down in the south end of town. I went over to Dutch Brothers. One thing they all have with one exception is they have heavy concrete or metal posts protecting the building from cars hitting the building. In this very parking lot, there's a snow, there's a water shack on the easterly property line right across the parking lot from this, 25 feet. It's protected by 10 of these posts. Actually painted, it's very attractive, looks very nice. You couldn't hit that with a car. We're going to have two kids working in this facility all day long with no protection from a vehicle that might swing a little bit too far to the other side. The way it's striped now, if cars are parked along the north way and back out, you're going to have an issue and they may be blocked in by the cars that are facing the other direction. And I can just see the cars trying to maneuver around each other. Just really concerned for kids working in that shed with no protection as far as... So I would insist, I couldn't approve it, one, without a better layout and two, without some protection for that building, similar to the posts that are surrounding. Every, every fast food built the last few years, excepting In-N-Out, they don't have. Although they've got an architecture with stone, it looks like you're not going to get your car anywhere close to that. That's, your car is going to lose. But everybody's got those things. They're in this parking lot. They're also at the northerly Central Avenue exit. Couple of posts protecting some utilities there and also protecting what got to be a rarity in this day and age, payphone in that parking lot. And it's got two posts protecting it as well. So if we're protecting the payphone and basically utility extension out of the ground, I think we ought to protect in this building. I'm done. Maybe applicants have response. Thought out in my mind.
Does Commission have any other questions for staff? The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item?
Good afternoon. First, I would like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this, uh, plan again. My name is Violet Survey and we've been serving City of Series for now 17 years. 17 years is a long time for a little shack to stand strong. We count all of our blessings day by day. And I'm thankful to be here tonight because it's given us an opportunity to look a little bit, yes, for the safety, of course, of everybody. If anybody should be held accountable, we are the first ones to say we are going to be held accountable for anything that does happen on that site. We've been there for 17 years, never once have we had any accidents, any reports. If we do, please let us know when and what has occurred on that site. So when we talk about safety, that's with anything. Like for example, 2,600-square-foot building, only 19 parking lots. Where are we going to fit all those cars? What if somebody crosses from the hotel and gets hit from walking? So we can go on and on with what if, what if this and what if that. Tonight, we're here to ask the Planning Commission to help us to come to a solution in order to continue to provide service to our community. We love being in the City of Series. We love our commissioning board. We support our council. We support our, all of our staff members, and you're from Tedif to our representative Garrett. And what we're asking for is all of the items that the Planning Commissioner has mentioned are very fixable. We can re, uh, draw out the parking spots. The lines can be readjusted. We can also insert the concrete, cement concrete for the more security. We're willing to go ahead and proceed and accommodate anything to do with the safety of everybody. However, in order to continue growing as a small business, to stay open year-round and to employ individuals, I can't tell you how many kids we've employed and we've put them out in the working force. And today, I can put my hand and vouch for every single one of them. We are proud, proud small business owners. We're going to take title to that. We are asking you guys, if you can work with us, we're willing to work with the city to place any, if we need to redraw the parking lot, we're willing to do that. We're willing to put any security posts to be able just to take a few cars. And we also have pagers that we want to make sure, we don't want to back up no drive-through because we can already see how Habit Burger is looking like over there on Mitchell as well. So in order to simplify it, we are taking orders, payments. We're also handing out pagers. We do ask customers to park either to get out to get their orders or we can hand it to them at the right side of the window. And there is a 10-inch, I'm sorry, 10-foot spacing from the sidewalk away, away back for the tent. Those also... Those also will be a lot more heavy story and heavy duty because we understand the wind can kind of get crazy at times. So with that being said, I do want to appreciate everybody. And we really will hope to work with City of Series and congratulations to everybody that's new on the board and that continues to stay. We hope that as a family, you guys understand that if we're going to stay open for the winter time and have a permit for year round, if my landlord wants me there to be there year round, we need to make some money. We need to be able to let these kids keep working as well so they can pay for their schooling, their books and all that. Nobody's going to want to just come out in the rain and in the wind to get a cup of coffee when you're up against Starbucks, Dutch. This is why we're here today. We want to work with the city wisely to help one of your biggest, biggest, smallest business in town that we take pride in. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Debbie Martinez. I represent Community. I'm a community activist. I'm also the founder of We Are La Raza Parents Union. And what I do is I support the disadvantaged population of children that don't have that equality to go on to armed force or go on to college. The only thing they have is workforce. And so I had a town hall meeting here on February the first, right, right there here, City Hall with Series Unified School District. And I had announced employment for Violet and we had 200 families that night attend my event. Out of those 200 families, I could honestly say 80% of those families came to our table to find out how they can get employment for their children. I've heard children standing in line and I'm not talking elementary, I'm talking high schoolers ready to exit high school that said, I can't wait to get a job there at Heaven's Snow. Moms are asking me, how can we get a hold of Violet because our children want to work there? Yes, safety is a concern, just like it's a concern at our school sites. Hope somebody will pay attention to that one. But as far as the shack, that shack I view as a workforce for our children when they first, first come out of high school on their way to customer service, on their way to some sort of job skills, perhaps even to be on a city council one day. They have to start somewhere. Seventeen years speaks volume with no accidents. Knock on wood, they have another successful 17 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi. My name is Noam Yochoa and I am speaking on behalf of Heaven's Snow. I've been with Violet for about almost a decade. She was actually my first job ever. And through her blessings have, have come tremendously. I've worked at Starbucks. I've got into the county. I'm a substitute teacher. And I still go back to help her seasonal. She has poured her heart into this business and we will make sure, like she stated, that the safety of everyone is a priority and that we will be there serving our community. Not only do high school students come, but all around, people that live in Key, Series, Maresto, whoever. And we're trying to expand to help everyone get jobs. Nowadays, it's so hard to even get a job at Starbucks. So if we can even just make it a year-round establishment and make it easy to where we could help customers that are disabled, they have kids that can't even get off. I have two kids and I have a disabled son. So getting off sometimes in the rain for a cup of coffee is not ideal. However, if we had a drive-up window that was able to accommodate, that would be perfect. And if we need to redraw the plan for the for the lines, like do more the way you want it towards safety and it's not causing any accidents or traffic jams or if we need to put the the metal or the cement post, then that could be done. Those are all easy fixes. And I just want to come to you guys, ask you guys to just give us a chance, you know, because I feel like we want to grow and help the community as best as we can. And we, she's been doing it for 17 years and we have no, we haven't had no problems. So thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is John Warren. New proposed location mobile business will most definitely conflict with the water mill dispensing business at the Caswell entrance. Customers don't want to carry the their five gallon they don't want to carry these things across. When they go there to the business, that water business, they park right next to it as close as they can get. And even if they're using the one gallon containers, they don't want to make 15 trips. They want to go further. And so there's three or four vehicles there a lot of the time. In addition, right next to that location, put it up on the screen. Grocery store business has a big roll-up door there. And all the big trucks that deliver produce and products to that grocery come in that Caswell entrance where they drive through the location where two aero bar parked right there facing out to that Caswell entrance parking lot. Back up to that roll-up door and they in addition, right next to the huge big empty dumpsters for all refuse so what you have, the big garbage trucks come there with those tip-up things in the front. Pick those things up. So you have a lot of confusion in that part of the store. This permit is allowed traffic entering from that side would be meeting the vehicles head-on. Talk about traffic in parking lots. Type of use would add to that. Water customer, delivery trucks, garbage trucks. No come customer, grocery store customer, all together in one. Nothing really in the site plan when I thought originally that plain house three vehicle layout would be channelled. People grow up learning to drive. Drive in there from there. Customers, they're going to be meeting. That's not, that's not a good customers will either be blocked in or unable to park their cars grocery store. Large or four car blocking all the parking stalls. Irregardless of how they're striped. Right properly. They're still going to be blocked, but under number four, it says additional vehicles in line directed by staff to park in parking stalls. As discussed before with this traffic is a difficult train personnel wearing young, untrained high school students or even college students have a difficult time directing trafficking at them. People just don't listen. Ask them to do something. How can they do it? So untrained personnel shouldn't be asked. You're going to direct traffic anywhere. There's requirements by law that say you have person to leave the shack and go out and try to prevent traffic where they're also trying to serve. Initially moving this business from its present location to the new proposed they're they're away from the hot water and all of that. I don't know how buck around and just all the way to the back of the restroom. Yeah, when they're type of business. So there's lots of things that can be considered. And where there should be mission before and the city council has denied the direct
Mr. Warren, your time's up. Thank you. Is there any other comments? You can step up to the podium. Thank you.
Sorry to come up with, but I wanted to emphasize a little bit about the gentleman that was just speaking. Again, restroom, water heater, all that is health department approved. Everything is within the limits. We have water heaters in the stand that warms up our water up to temperature. That has nothing to do with the site. And the other thing is, is that the water mill, when people come to get the water mill from the, the water from the water mill, they usually park to the right of the parking. If you bring up the map once again, please bring it up. Yeah, to the right of those three blue arrows, that's usually where people park to get the waters from the water mill. And it's closer to their cars anyways. So it's right there. And also as far as the traffic goes with delivery people, everybody, everything gets done early on in the mornings, which it doesn't conflict with any, any of our business hours. Would that be instead? Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Bringing it back to the commission for any discussion and questions.
Started off. First, I just want to thank Violet for the business success. My wife makes me take her every couple of weeks. Oh, she's a big fan. I do tend to agree with planning commissioner Katchel. I think, and I think the applicant is willing to work with us. I see some issues with the parking stalls and just this shack location itself. I think Mr. Warren brings up a good point about the water mill there. People do tend to drive directly up to it. It can cause some congestion. So I would motion for a delay and a new site plan for this. And just a reworked version and working directly with the applicant on this.
So I've been going to Heaven's Snow for a long time too, since my kids were younger and one of my concerns is back to Commissioner Katchel's point is the drivers in the opposite direction. We do have a lot of high school drivers. So are they going to be able to navigate through there when they're in line getting ready to drive out and you have a car pulling in? Or you have a car that's going to back out right into that drive-through area? So those are some of my concerns as well.
You guys have pretty much said what's going through my mind. My, I mean, I love them trying to, you know, trying to step up and prove the business. Thank you for your business. But it's just really hard. Traditionally, when a drive-up window is on your left-hand side when you're driving to have to go across traffic. It's a track, for me, it's a traffic flow thing. I hope we can work this out somehow.
I can make one last comment. My comment is, I think this is better than the last time we had it because I believe they wanted drive-through where the town. And we were afraid that people would be stopping on Central, et cetera. Now, I, not being on all the traffic patterns, I would think that Caswell would be as busy as out. So I think this is a better design.
Staff, can we pull up the, the site room? So what if the shack was more near the building? Would that means the because you'd still have where the drive-through is and where the shack is, those parking spots near the building would be scratched. And I think that would leave enough room for the parking near Caswell. And the entrance, when people enter that lot from Caswell, there should be enough room to enter on the correct side of the traffic flow.
Would you say the tables would be on the side of flipping the
They'd have to be
on the side of the
Yeah. I don't know, just, just a thought. I just, I was thinking about. Yeah, because the walk, the walk-in is on the opposite side of the drive-through. So that would, yeah, that would be true. Unless it's in the
Quite a conundrum. I've
Yeah.
Many years have had the punch card in my wallet so that I tend to get one and I'm big supporter of the business. I appreciate everything it does. Seventeen years successfully traffic happened all year long. I have no objections to that. I have no objection selling coffee. But what, what it does, it points out the issue is they're competing now with year-round businesses and they even mentioned Starbucks, Dutch Brothers selling coffee also. They've got full-blown buildings, parking lanes, parking lots just for the building. I'm not saying this needs to go to that scale, but what it points out is they're able to find solutions to those because they're not because those are the primary uses of their piece of property. In this case, it's a secondary use along with the water mill, the pay phone, everything else that goes on on that property. So it's a, it's a real conundrum to try to figure out what's the best I've looked at it a lot of different ways. Shifted it back to Central and moved further north, you could have room to back it up. But then you're still going to have the parking cars facing the wrong direction. Unless you made all the parking wired to come in the southerly exit off of Central. In other words, stripes along the front of the building itself from the how they're for southbound cars have to be all one-way direction traffic. That would allow it to work, but the store may not want to take away all its parking right at the front door. I walk by it dozen times a week, literally. I've been looking at it since it first came to us a year and a half ago. I appreciate that. In fact, the lady said she'd be perfectly willing to put up the security posts and that was, I'm very glad to hear that. So that's department, take that off. Still this issue of how to resolve it, gentlemen, as you mentioned, the truck, trucks coming in, if in fact they only come in during burning hours. I'm not sure about. Sitting here, we're still wrestling with this thing, trying to find a solution because we all like the business. Nice thing to have in series. But the solution is, I'm not sure.
And I mean, I think for that business especially, you know, the drive-through has been convenient when that was tried out years back. But it's just trying to come up with that solution so it's safe for all drivers in that location.
We can continue this item and we can work with that and to get a revised site plan and see and include the additional conditions like the pillars around the drive-through for safety and everything.
And is the owner of, is the owner involved in, in the site plan as well? Owner of Los Secoia, okay.
I'll make a motion to continue it. Or do you want to have
Indefinitely. So we have time to work with the applicant. We're not in time.
That was my thought. That was my thought. So I'll make a motion to continue.
Hi, Teddy, this is Josh. Can you hear me? Teddy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Josh.
If you, if you wanted to try to determine a date certain, you would be able to preserve your, your public notice.
So let's look at a calendar real quick. About May 20th. Second meeting in May. Will that work, Josh?
Yeah, any, any date works, just whatever works for staff and the applicant, the commission, just to, just to give you enough time to, to bring a new proposal.
I was looking at the audience to see if.
Would that work? Oh.
She says, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we continue this to a certain being made, our meeting 20th. Allow the applicant to work with staff and find a resolution to the issues that we've all tried to solve tonight.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Condit.
Hi.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Vice Chair Katchel. Chairperson of Arrow.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item number six, 24-04, conditional use permit. Proposal for a conditional use permit to construct a 16,000-square-foot food truck court for up to 18 food trucks. Covered seating area, game area, and public restrooms. The parking lot will have 36 parking stalls, seven of which will have EV charging stations. The property frontage will be lined with a new wrought iron fence and chain-link fencing along the side and rear property lines. The proposed operating hours are 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. Food trucks will not perform any maintenance or cleaning of trucks on-site. Andy Sanchez is the applicant. Sequent status is exempt per section 15332. Required action, adopt PC resolution number 24-12. May we get a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This presentation is for a mobile food truck court, application number 24-04, conditional use. 24-04 is a conditional use permit entitlement to request the construction of a 16,000-square-foot food truck court for up to 18 food trucks. Covered seating area, game area, and a public restroom building. Parking lot will have 36 parking stalls, seven of which will be EV charging stations. The property frontage will be aligned with a new wrought iron fence, chain-link fencing along the side and rear property lines. And the proposed operating hours are from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. And the food trucks will not perform any maintenance or cleaning of the trucks on-site. The project is located on the southeast corner of Central Avenue in Caswell. Sorry, located on Farm Supply Road. This is the aerial vicinity map showing the project area. The project site is zoned at Plan Community 50. And the project has the general plan designation of light industrial. The surrounding area to the south, east, and west are zoned light industrial. And the area to the north is zoned residential. Here is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing to, for the mobile food vendors to be parked on gravel or alternative material surface. And they'll be lined up with a concrete pathway for customers to access the trucks. And to remain in compliance with ADA accessibility to each of the vendors. A permanent public restroom facility will be constructed. It is. Western side of the property line by the existing business that's there. And the site will be lined, the frontage will be with the wrought iron and the side and the rear will have that chain-link fence. So the property can be secured at night when the. And the food court is not in operation. This is a concept plan provided by the applicant to, it's not exactly what they're envisioning, but it's a. An idea of what they're thinking. They wanted to have a grass area and canopies for shade and have like a little family game area included. Staff recommends to make the determination that this project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guideline section 15332 in field development projects. And to approve 24-04 conditional use permit subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft's report. Draft resolution PC 24-12. This concludes staff presentation. And I also want to add that this is the first of this use type. We do hope for the commission's input on visions and how we want to operate in.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff? I have, yes, I'll go first. So page 23 says that there's going to be 32 parking stalls, but this first page on the staff report recommendation says 36. Can you clarify?
Thirty-two parking stalls are required. I based the calculation off the same as we did for El Remetito. The site has 36 parking spaces, so it has more than.
Okay, and then one more question. The hours of operation as well on the page 23 is 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. It looks like recommendation is 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., so it's.
Yes, the original referral went out with the 9:00 a.m. to midnight. That was the same hours of operation for the Modesto Grubhub. Series PD commented that they didn't want to open until midnight, especially with the residential north of it. And so we decided 10:00 p.m. would be the very latest, that Series PD would be okay.
Thank you.
So my question is for city staff. Was the public notified of this meeting? Under property owners or residents?
Property owners.
Okay, my understanding is from our joint meeting with the city council that we're supposed to notify residents.
We are in the process of working on.
Okay.
Being able to get that information. I am working with Stanislaus County GIS. The way the previous director was doing it, I'm not sure how, neither does GIS, so we're trying to find a way.
Okay, Ms. Montgomery mentioned that we are currently doing that already. That your understanding about her.
We noticed, all the noticing for El Remetito went out to property owners and the current occupants.
Okay, but not for this one?
Not for this one. We are working on it though.
Okay.
Yeah, just sending the occupant would seem. A follow-up question on her question. How many parking spaces does exist? Is of the total on this property. Are devoted to the. It's there already. Based on its square footage, it's going to, I mean, it's got all these spaces are there now, as I understand. They were put in to serve the existing. Take away from the business.
The, the parking lot. Yes, but the, the existing parking lot was built for the whole, it's supposed to be a retail strip. Only one of the businesses has gone in, the rest of the parcels are still vacant. But the parking lot was built for the entire retail.
That's what I thought. That's why I was just hoping to get whatever that calculation is based on. That off the total. Is better? Okay, sorry. Got these new chairs and they're not the most comfortable in the world, to be honest with you. So maybe, maybe I'm the only one doesn't find them comfortable. My back's killing me sitting up here tonight. Anyway, yeah, so I, I'm just concerned that we've got however many spaces on this total property and we need to subtract whatever's needed for the existing building based on its square footage to know how many spaces we have left over for this use, which would take up the rest of the property. It looks like there's probably enough for everybody to go around. I was just hoping that maybe we knew off the top of our head. I don't know what word it says on parking. I know commercial typically is one for every 300 square feet or so in, in many ordinances, but I don't know what our ordinance is. I'm not up to date on that and I apologize for that. That's all for now.
Any other questions? So we will open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
uniquely serious. I think Shane Parkson can reply to this himself, but. In the report, it mentioned. Activities there. The. The market music, and then it said something about games. Sure, what the definition of games is. This kind of thing. Because I don't see it up there in Modesto, Main Street, so.
Evening. Good evening. My name's Shane Parkson. I own property there. It'll be a, it'll be a transition at some point. I really respect the fact that you're worried about parking. But you've got bigger problems with parking elsewhere. I think that when you look at that, Bob, and where food trucks are placed now, this is like outstanding, hidden shoulders above anywhere else. There, there hasn't been any consideration for that yet. Maybe with the, the other stand, there's, there's trucks somewhere, but we're not here to discuss that. We'd like to really figure out. What you're looking for in, in, in this type of an operation, because I have another location I'd like to, to put one in. This, this would be my second location. I have probably one of the largest ones in Merced County right now, or a Grubhub. Fortunately, I have tons of parking there, but that's irrelevant. I think this would be a great asset to that part of the community. Not a lot of, lot of food options out there. And when you talk about games, they want to maybe have a little cornhole, something kids can play. Their folks are eating. Try to entice people to come there. Not a long term, as far as, you know, they're not going out there to dinner and have, been a long time there. So I think the traffic would, and traffic won't be impeded there. There's plenty of parking, there is street parking there too. It's available all the time. Whenever, you know, whatever the planning commission would like to do. Acceptable to us. The only thing that, you know, I've been dragged through this knothole so many times that it takes months and months and months. And at 10% to 12% interest, it's a killer business right now. Expediting anything would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Good evening, commission. Looking at the applicant's. Looking at the applicant's requests and proposals. I can see a lot of good things. One of my concerns, and I think really needs to be addressed, is the adjacent business. The business that's already there on the property. This food park, Grubhub thing, supposed to be a family-oriented, they go there with the kids or whatever. Play around, but I don't think it was in the consent of the city council. Authorized and brought in the marijuana business. Unity, those two kinds of. Marijuana business, cannabis business, kind of placed out in our, in our residential area. Out in our. So I'm not sure if this is a good mix to bring a family-oriented type of business in conjunction with. That existing business. Entry, I guess, as well as a barber shop. Happened to stumble into. Shop there too, while it appears. The other concern, I think that you should look at it, the surface that these vehicles. I don't think vehicles should be on gravel surfaces. Whole surface should be asphalt or concrete, solid surface. And our residential requirements. Can't park your car on the lawn, can't park your motorhome on the lawn. They have to be parked on a proved driveway. Surface that oil leaks and spills and things. The other thing is noise. Looked at this proposal, they copied the series noise or. Getting with is playing radios inside your home. That type of thing. Well, we're not having radios or music. Outside, sound that's carrying. Current, I think, requirements for food vendors here locally are that they don't have any audio, radios, things like that. I think for the Grubhub type of situation, which is right close to a residential neighborhood across the street. That there shouldn't be any radios, that kind of thing. Let me get your food. Fine. But I don't think that music and. As far as notifying the general public, I did see a public notice posted. Additional use. Posted at. The local residential. Think that's something that should be done. Beef services. Really should be considered. Some consideration or thought as to whether families to the marijuana business. Put that out there, so it's not in conjunction with schoolyards, churches, parks, and things like that. Now it appears that we're going to. Add. That's.
Thank you.
Andy Sanchez, I'm the applicant.
If you could explain maybe the reason for the gravel and not concrete for the food trucks? Um, we, we hope by hopefully be more of a permanent thing. I know we're proposing for a but you think it's a really good idea? Um, I, right now they have to, they will have to leave the site, go to a commentary, basically uh, dump all their grease and do all that kind of stuff. Um, we think they're in terrible trouble. They would have controlled them. Want to put our best foot forward. Really want to active. Uh, I mean, want to stay there, want to be there. We're not looking for something actually really good model for, I mean, you have crow's hunting right to the road, you have a truck on every corner. As an opportunity, they, they have an opportunity right now. I'd go there, I mean, very clean. Um, I think the truck out of there, they're pretty very, they're very presentable because they down there.
Is there any questions from the commission for the applicant?
Yeah, question. Question was asked earlier, um, notification. Were the residential homeowners letting them?
The property owners within a 300 foot radius were notified.
Thank you.
Hi, Rosalind de Vier, Series. I also live in Hackett. I live in this district. Um, my locate, one, I guess my biggest concern is the notification, just my residents just talking. Um, my neighbors, people that live directly across the street were not notified. We had the discussions this weekend, like a lot of people were at the parks. We had lots of people to talk to. Um, but a lot of them didn't know this cover, this was going on today. And that's a big concern for me, especially with stuff that's looking, um, to move into my district. Um, it is a food desert, as you know, on the west side of Series. We don't have any many options. We have two, I guess, two main locations and one fast food. We would love to have more options there on the west side of Series. I understand it is an infill. Um, so it kind of would be easy to get through. Um, I look forward to having food choices. I think it's a great idea to have the grub hub. I'm very supportive of a grub hub or food. Especially variety on the west side of Series. Um, but I think my biggest, um, thing was notification, the fact that I can go to a park and talk to nearly a hundred people and not one person over at Brown Park or San Rhino Park, as it's called now, was aware of this and they're almost directly and I, a lot of them are very supportive. So it's not like they weren't supportive of the idea. They love having a variety of food there on the west side. But I think their part was, why didn't I know about this? Why can't I comment? And I think that's important just to make sure that they're here so they can also feel that their voices are being heard here in Series. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've, we've been really excited about this and we've publicly, we kind of, we put it out there publicly, um, that this has been proposed. Uh, we've also talked to a lot of the neighbors, um, been out kind of pushing this. We haven't had anybody tell us. Very well received. I know there's kind of the last meeting, there was some kind of conflict about notifications, but that was one of our big things, about getting the notification, having been able to everything that would be really like to be object on top of it. Overputting out right now. Have a bear, bear. Um, and I change like if we could do that.
Hardy Gil here. Uh, my family owns the Flyers Catholicity on that side of town and, um, I mean, we see anywhere from seven to eight hundred customers a day. Literally, there's nowhere to eat on that side of town. I mean, we've been notifying everybody ourselves that this thing might be coming. Everybody's excited. There's nowhere to eat over there besides Mr. Takeda McDonald's. Everybody we know is all for it. They want something over there. And I know you have concerns about there's a marijuana dispensary, right? But I mean, families go to convenience stores all the time, right? There's beer, there's liquor. There's homeless people outside doing crack, cocaine, all sorts of stuff. In a dispensary, you have full-time security. You have to have an ID to get in. You can be 18 years old and get in. Convenience stores, you have to be 21 to buy alcohol. So there's arguments to oppose.
Sir, can you speak to us, please?
Oh, yeah, yeah, my bad. I'm sorry. But those are your arguments right there to your proposal. So there's just, you know, right there. But as there's that, as far as that goes, but everybody's excited. This is something that everybody wants. There's nowhere on that side of town to eat. There's literally two options. So I mean, that's just something for you guys to think about. Like I said, we've been working on this for months. Um, as far as Mr. Parson said, eight to 10% interest is literally killing everybody these days. Uh, so I mean, like I said, the ball's in your guys' hands. At that joint planning commission meeting, city council said, they gave you guys the approval. So it's up to you guys.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to close public hearing. We're also going to take a five-minute break. Commission, sorry. Okay, thank you. I'm bringing it back to the commission for discuss, discussion and questions. Any?
Maybe to focus the discussion, should we talk about the location and I'm not comfortable with the notification?
Can I add in on this real quick, please? So our title currently says the 300-foot radius. Um, we did discuss it at a city council meeting, the recommendation to notify occupants of the properties in the radius. Uh, we have not brought forward, um, an amendment to our ordinance to include that. And we will also need to bring forward a budget amendment um, to include the additional postage and the additional man-hours for all of those meetings.
So a gentleman is here for the next item. He is outside of the radius and he received a notice for item seven. So personally, I'm not comfortable with the notice that was given on this item. Um, I don't want to find ourselves in a situation similar to the gas station. Um, they're on Whitmore by Flyers. I think every, whether they're a property owner or not, they need to be notified of these meetings so they could speak their voice and, uh, their thoughts on the project. So personally, I would like to see this at a, the next planning commission meeting, if possible. Um, that would be my recommendation.
So I do agree with the notice. It does need to go to the actual residents living in the area, um, because I know there are some concerns, like I've already heard with that dispensary. And, um, I actually got to go out to that project site and see, um, Mr. Sanchez. And that was one thing I asked about was the dispensary, because you have the high school down the street, junior high, and kids are going to be walking over, eating, you know, over there. But as mentioned earlier, um, there is security and they have to check ID for every person going in. So I could imagine that that's very secure. Um, but I would be afraid that there could be other parents that are concerned. And by putting those notices out, then we're allowing other public to come in and speak.
And just, just to add on that point, um, I did reach out to Chief Perry this afternoon. Um, they have not responded to that dispensary for any criminal activity. They've responded five times for alarm calls. So I just want to give that information to the
And then one more thing to add. So obviously, we don't want to continue to cause project delays. Um, but we are going to be setting a precedent on this grub hub. So if we can also tonight talk about some of the other concerns so that we were prepared for the next meeting, so we don't have to continue to delay.
One thing we did talk about a little bit was parking and I, I was the one that raised the question. And the answer was, probably came from staff is parking lot was sized for the entire property as a strip mall, if you want to call it that, for lack of a better term. So this is a fully paved and, and parking lot designed for typical, um, retail uses. Think we can also note, grub hub is a unique use, so we're breaking new ground perhaps. But in that vein, trucks come in every day, they're driven in by the person that's working on the facility and then driven out. Maybe some additional employees come in, but I don't think that's a substantial number of employees. In other words, what I'm getting at is trying to use my old plan, planner brain, what's left of it. Say, greatest standard for new use, don't necessarily have to account for every employee that's working there because they're, um, with them in form of truck. Say, greatest standard for new use, don't necessarily have to account for every employee that's working there because they're with them in form of truck. In other words, 17 trucks, they've got spaces for 17 trucks there. That's 17 parking spaces you don't necessarily need because they're trucks. Yes, so other employees may come and go. That's, at least where my brain works on this stuff. Brain works, but that's what it does. So I, I think the parking is, in my mind, is probably going to be adequate. I, I'm, unless it's wildly successful and there's so many people out there at that grub hub that they're saying, we got to get a bigger place.
Right. And the, the calculation I used was just the historical, what has been used to calculate for El Remetito. So the commission can also set that standard on how we calculate parking spaces for this type of use. Do not happen.
The ordinance doesn't address everything. This is creature. There's other topics still, the games. I, I don't know all the games here. The pictures are so small. But I assume they're not going to make the kind of noise that pickleball has created for itself by being a neighbor in certain areas of California, places where it's a very loud game. Play it, it's a lot of noise. Do you have residential across the street? All there or not. Whether these are the kind of games which are going to produce a repetitive noise or not, I don't know. Cornhole, no. The others, I'm not sure. Have the parking, excuse me, to have a gravel or a paved area for the trucks, that's an issue.
I do have one question for the applicant. The wrought iron fence, is that going to be where that, where the brick wall is? Is that going to come down or is that, if the applicant wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, sorry. I just want to confirm where that wrought iron fence is going to be. Is that where that brick wall is? Is the wall going to come down?
Proposing partial, partial brick wall, part wrought iron, just a little bit more physical.
Okay.
We're not answering. Do you want to?
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else from the commission? Are we going to set a continuance? The public comment, its period has closed. Thank you.
Are the planning commissioners okay with the 10 o'clock for the sound, 10 p.m. for the sound?
So I'm wondering for the sound, I mean, 10 p.m. seems reasonable, is that like amplified sound, if they're, they brought a DJ out? Things like that? What do you guys?
I've never been a particularly sensitive person. I think that's fine. In other words, wouldn't bother me. I wouldn't be griping about it. It's a legitimate issue.
So the-
Just, just activity in general, 10 o'clock seems reasonable. My mind, I assume the police department.
It's no live bands or DJs or any, it's within the noise ordinance. So they, they can have like a little radio or something during the, or like the vendors can have one right outside their truck to listen to. Not meant for like sound to go outside of the park itself.
It's sort of like the snow cone facility. Buy it on the sidewalk and you hear it right by you.
And then just to-
Yeah, we're not, we're not proposing for like live music or anything. We're kind of, just ambient noises. We're trying to, that's all we're looking for. We're not looking to. They were, yeah, I mean, and on top of that, you have a block away from us, you have dance all the time then.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just go back to the notice. So can, can you explain that why, on a different item, somebody received a notice outside of the radius and not for this item?
Yeah, feet, right? 300 feet, so they're notified with 300 feet. Is that law? Why would we delay based upon notice?
So the notice issue, it's going to take time because it has to go to, you mentioned, city council has to go through a-
Ordinance amendment, a budget amendment.
And that, what's usually the timeframe on something like that? It's not, unknown.
Teddy, Teddy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Just, just for the commissioners, there's a couple of comments on the notice. So that, that could take a while for, this is Josh here from your city attorney office. That could take a while for it to go to the process. Right now, the code provides that it, it has to be published in the paper. It has to be mailed to property owners within 300 feet. There might be a couple of other methods as well. It includes the property owner. But to, just from, as a comment from the commission, it's, it would be a bit burdensome for staff to go beyond what's currently provided in the code while all that's still pending. And it is also difficult to provide notice to residents beyond property owners because that's the information that appears on the assessors' rule. But to, just to include additional notice beyond what's provided in the code might, might be a little burdensome until we get it back before the commission, just, just to be aware. It also costs more money.
Thank you.
So is Ms. Montgomery on, on this call?
She is. The, the notice that went out is the same notice that is in the newspaper. So it's every project. That went out on every single mailing.
So I just, I kind of want clarification. I was told, I think, two meetings ago that it was impacted, that we were notifying more than property owners. And the radius was extended. So if Ms. Montgomery can clarify that, because me and Commissioner Catchell were both given that information a couple of meetings ago.
That was apparently for El Remetito?
For El Remetito, we did notify property owners and current occupants for all the properties. Beyond that, it's, doing that is outside the norm. So beyond that would be the ordinance and the budget. I can't speak to what the previous director agreed to.
Well, it just seems to do something for one project, not for another. Again, going back to the flyer station, if public notice was given, which it, which it wasn't, and to only property owners. But if it was, if it was extended to the fact that I recommended at the joint meeting, possibly more people would have showed up and the vote may have been different. So again, I just think to do it for one project and not the other, isn't very good practice in my opinion.
So, so basically, El Remetito did it on their own.
Public comments already closed.
So El Remetito took it upon themselves to put that out and make sure everybody knew about it. It's not a policy. We did have the joint meeting between the planning commission and the council. It was brought up. It has not been codified to make that a policy. And so you're asking us to go outside to what policy normally is, after the way we treat you. It was, or as an applicant for Remetito, they actually took it upon themselves and did it themselves.
Okay, that, that was not clarified. So the city is not doing it, the applicant themselves did it.
Question, and then a comment, a question. Do, do we publish it in the newspaper hearings as well? Do we publish these hearings in the newspaper as well?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that, that was a confusion because we, if you recall, back in mid-March, when I did a knee-jerk reaction of, we didn't meet with the El Remetito. We didn't agree on everything at the time because it was not properly done. We canceled that meeting, which wrecked all the public hearings. And so we had to read out to everybody, and that's why Panda was pushed back. That was why Andy Sanchez was pushed back. And so we, now we noticed everybody in the paper, and so it all happened to fall on tonight.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. And so I think what we're seeing tonight, this issue of notification policy needs to still be addressed at the city council level. They're going to do what they want. Meantime, we've legally noted, given legal notice by two methods, 300 feet and newspapers. Okay.
Any other questions or comments, the commission? So can I get a motion? Are we, are we just, are we going to continue for the notice issue or what?
Real quick, are you completed on all conditions of approval that you want to put forward for a grub hub or a food port before we look forward?
Yeah, can you repeat that?
Is the commission all finished with all the conditions of approval that is going to be required for this?
I think that's what we're thinking about. At least I am. Since I've been doing a lot of talking tonight, it's I don't have any major issues at this point with this. It's today. Whether, again, I, I did raise the question about putting it on gravel, if that's a good idea or not. If it's gravel, that's noisy and it closes at 10, but it takes them until 10:30 to get out of there, or 11 o'clock. Maybe you can have noise from tires on gravel. I don't know. I'm trying to think of everything I can think of all at once here. But again, it, it, it's across the street. It's across a major street. Adjacent uses to the west-south and I don't think are noise-sensitive uses. So that's not a big one for me. But I'm also concerned, are we setting a precedent for the next one that comes in and says, well, you did this down there? And now this one needs to have some other standards. I want to make sure that we're treating it as a one item, one use, not an ordinance-level precedent for the next one that comes through. That's why I want to, for the commissioners. I stand. I could, I could vote to support it as it's conditioned and right, but I understand if other commissioners feel that way.
Oh, yes, that, Gary.
There you go. Sorry. Well, I've ate at the one downtown several times. I really like, the only thing I do not like is parking. Sometimes you have to go around the side, around the corner to park. It is very difficult. Probably not. Now, as far as noise, et cetera, if we can set a time limit, said 10 o'clock, even could go down to seven, whatever. That, that's, that's neither here nor there. Now, we're talking across the street from where they're at. And the time I've been at the one downtown, you know, I don't, don't live there and I haven't spent hours there. But I didn't see any, anything that was significant, except for the traffic going down Ninth Street. And volume. Well, I don't have any, I don't have any problems with the people being notified. I'm satisfied with our general one. We usually do go from there.
And so just since the notice, as Gary brought it up again, Councilwoman Vera indicated that we didn't meet standard, that 300 feet, people weren't advised. So just wanted, that public comment was-
Well, well, the, the property owners might have received mail, but all the residents within that area aren't the same that aren't the, are on the assessors' role for property ownership.
Or comment, the owners.
Okay.
Is there any other comments or questions?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve it as recommended. I'll make a motion that we approve it as recommended and spelled out in detail in the staff report.
I'll second it.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Real quick, real quick, you're making recommendations following the conditions of approval you set forth, correct? Not just the staff report for rice space parking? And we talked about two different sounds. So is it 10 o'clock, 7 o'clock, what sound?
10 o'clock.
And then you also agree on gravel, asphalt. It's conditioned. So you're following this as gravel right now? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Who was the second? Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Condit?
Aye.
Commissioner Dill Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Catchell?
Aye.
Chairperson Otero?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Good luck with it.
Moving along to item number seven. 23-23 Conditional Use Amendment. Proposal to consider an amendment to the El Remetito flea markets conditional use permit for a previously approved conditional use permit. 13-12 Conditional Use Amendment as amended. Nelson Gomez is the applicant. Sequoia status exempt per section 15301 and 15304. Required action is to adopt PC Resolution Number 24-08. Can I get the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This presentation is for the El Remetito Amendment Application Number 23-23 Conditional Use Permit. So in my presentation, I'm just highlighting the changes to the previously approved conditional use permit. Everything else is remaining the same. So Conditional Use Permit 23-23, the amendments to include APNs 06, 056, 05506, and 056, 055032. To be allowed as overflow parking, which is the two, two parcels to the westernmost of the property. To streamline special event permits by including a predetermined set of conditions. Adding an additional 100 vendors to include 30 mobile food vendors. Construction of a 454-square-foot restroom building, an electronic changeable copy sign, a mobile food vendor park, and a night market. This project is located on the northwest corner of Crow's Landing and West Hackett Road. This is the aerial vicinity map of the project area. The project site is Zone Plan Community 68. The project site has a general plan designation of community commercial and neighborhood commercial. The property to the north is vacant property that's zoned regional commercial. The south is an orchard that is zoned neighborhood commercial. To the east is general industrial and community facilities. And community facilities into the west is an orchard that is medium to and medium high density residential. So here's the site plan showing the. Electronic changeable copy sign that's being proposed. It is being proposed on the. Northeast corner of the property and it will be facing northeast away from the Carol Lane residence. So none of the light will reflect into their area. The site plan is showing the proposed food truck park for maximum of thirty mobile food vendors. The applicant is proposing the operation hours of eight AM to midnight year round. This is also in that northeastern portion. Of the, the property that's currently a parking lot. They want to convert it to. A mobile food vendor court and a night market. And this is the site plan that shows the proposed night market. The applicant's proposing to operate the night market three days per week. On the three days that the regular flea market does not operate on, currently it operates four days a week. So the three days it does not operate, they're proposing to do this night market. Um, and the night markets to operate till eleven PM. And this is the overall site plan showing the, the night market, the food vendor court in the northeast corner. And then the overflow parking along that western property line. Staff recommends to make the determination that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to sequel guideline section one five three zero one existing facilities. And one five three zero four minor alterations to land. And approve. Two three dash two three conditional use permit subject to the findings and conditions contained in the attached draft resolution PC two four dash zero eight. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff or comments? I'll go first. I do have a question about the, you mentioned the hours, eight AM to twelve AM. That was for the mobile food area?
Correct. That's what applicant proposed.
Okay, so. I think that should be reduced to ten PM. And that would be a standard for any type of. Mobile food vendor. Area. Anymore? We'll open up for public hearing.
Uh, Dale Katner on Carol Lane. We're talking food trucks again, eighty for thirty on this project. We're all on wells. Public or private wells out here. We'd like to maybe see. Standardization, if this is going to be something that's going to start. Guys might want to consider standardization for. What they're parking on, rock, asphalt, whatever. I'm not sure in this application whether they're going to be on asphalt or not. But uh, something to consider. Because we're all on private wells. The land development, got no idea what the land development is going to be. What are they going to do? Are they bringing in road base? Are they bringing in fill? Are they going to be doing as far as the minimal? Work on the property? The diagram includes property which backs up to Carol Lane. Don't know what their use for that is going to be, but being part of the West Landing specific plan. Anything that backs up to Carol Lane has to have a sound wall. They're going to develop that area right up against us. Also, that is. In the West Pacific plan, that is low density housing. Which in the agreement with the City of Series. Developer fees collected on improvements are going to be used to improve the abilities and infrastructure on Carol Lane. So. If. Their plans are going to change. Low density. Housing that's going to be around this. And there's a concern about developers fees that won't be available for improvement. Again, ten o'clock, I think was a good time. And I'm a little bit concerned about the nighttime flea markets. I think the original plan was for one night a week. And I'm not sure what they're saying about special events, what they bring in. Going to have live music till ten o'clock at night in the middle of the week. You know, the City of Series had. Sound. Noise regulations. Ten o'clock, even ten o'clock in the, during the week is. Late for a lot of people that live on that street. As when I leave at five, five thirty in the morning. A lot of people going out, go to work at five o'clock in the morning. So. I don't know, the ten o'clock noise might not be adequate for. Upon they plan on bringing in. There's a lot of issues there that we're not aware of yet. That's all I had concerns about right now. And of course, the utmost concern is no. Traffic on Carol Lane from the flea market. Established. Wanted to just bring that up. Hope you know. Traffic from the flea market. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Steve Strom and I am a neighbor of Dale. I just want to make it. It quick, but I want to back everything he said. I use to understand that he live on that street. Some days can be very trying out there. As it goes to midnight or whatever. And the other thing that I want to reiterate is that if they are going to do something with parking, it really will ask for. Some kind of gravel because the dust is, can get very disturbing out there. Will be backed up right against it. Also, I want to make another. Request about no traffic on our street, no way of getting eggs it through there. We, we do have people that. Roll over some fences and walk down there on the weekends sometimes. If we can keep that for minimum or actually get rid of that, that would be fantastic. Got it very well. Back up everything he said since he's been a president longer than I.
Thank you.
Evening again, Commissioners. The general plan zoning. West Landing specific area. And it's being. All around. Flea market. Going to build six thousand one hundred thirty-four homes. Over ten thousand residents. With a large number. I think what you're going to make a decision. It's going to greatly affect all of those people. As well as. I think going forward, we need to. There's a large number of people that work. All trans people, Russian people. They sleep. There's a large number of day sleepers out. Just like there. And there's those. There's going to be thirty vendors in that grub hub out there. And I know they're required to have a certain. I find it hard. A valid California. Reporting sale. That's one of the things that this. Collecting of sales tax, reporting of sales. You go to any of these mobile food vendors. Buy something, they don't collect sales tax. I'm assuming eight percent of what you just bought is being reported as. But you have to have a permit to do that. There's going to be six hundred and forty-eight dinner spaces, sixteen thousand. Going to be very special event activity. And as the. Request. Any other activity not listed shall be permitted. They want a blank check. They don't want to have to come back and get a temporary use permit. Thing that they do out there. Think that that's really important. They shouldn't be just given a blank check to run. Amplify music. And says that they shall not exceed seventy decimal restful at the property lot. Up until eleven PM. That's what's in there. I asked my audiologist what she thought about music at her property. Eleven o'clock at night. He says eighty-five. Is if you're in your home and you hear music that's seventy decimal outside your. Eleven o'clock. That you probably couldn't hear. That in my case, John, turn off your hearing aids. Might. So these are things that you need to consider. You want to operate Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Five thirty AM to six. Any more? You want three nights a week on Monday? At regard. I had some suggestions. That. I don't have time to read. So I'm going to close it up and say, hey, think about these things. Surface at the grub. Could be asphalt. Always in the. They should be given a. Ride. Each one of those should be. They should have.
Thank you.
Like to say thank you. Entire street of Carol Lane got notified. As three hundred feet of business was only included. Resident. Where happens. Uh, affects the entire. Carol Lane. They were all involved in the negotiation. Uh, specific plan was put in. City of Series allowed to can exist. Oh, there is, this is a. Get together. I never once read anything or heard anything. Of course, this probably doesn't fall into plan. But uh, what about the revenue? What about how many people this is going to employ? Like John Warren said, taxes, the sales taxes. These things have been addressed besides the building part of it? Some of us might want to. I do. One more issue that I don't think. Traffic control.
Sir? Sorry, you've had your time. We'll have to open, open up to other public comments.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Is there any other public comments tonight?
Evening. Nelson Gomez, I'm sure you already know who I am. Been coming here for better part of a year and a half. As to this particular project. I wish that folks that have spoken. In at all the meetings that we've had, city staff. Different other departments, like fire departments. Address each and every one of the concerns. But we have addressed them in all of the conditions. BUP application. First of all. Want to say that we're as to Carol Lane, which is a lot of comments. Now, look at it. One is that. Parking lot that we're talking about is not the main parking lot. Ramatito has approximately one thousand six hundred fifty-five parking spots paved. That will serve that particular. The gravel parking lot. Best of the current operation will be only considered as an overflow parking. And as an overflow parking, it will have all, it will meet all of the requirements. That overflow parking are contained in all the conditions that are currently in the City of Series. Are complying with. Furthermore, so it's not the main parking lot. Second of all. There is a condition that's specific that. Dates that there cannot be any ingress or egress from overflow parking. That's the only parcel that's going to butt Carol Lane. There will be no egress or ingress from the overflow parking onto Carol Lane. There's going to be a barrier so that no traffic can go. Furthermore, there's been discussion about other uses. From a Tito had asking for. Each and every one of these has a number of. Address first the food. We, we had an applicant that has sixteen thousand square feet. Were thirty-six parking places, eighteen trucks. We're having, asking for thirty trucks. The area where the trucks are going to be is an area that is sixty thousand square. One. Two, it will have. In an area that is compliant with the California Fire Code. It met several locations with fire department. Uh, areas are in fact in compliance with the Fire Code. Provided fire lanes that are going to be. That area in order for fire vehicles to be able to come through. Provided additional fire hydrants that will be on that site. Order to be able to. Any problem may happen the result of. Food court or that area that's going. For night market or for food court or for specialty. We have also. At um, read. We're having, we are asking for three and up to, it's up to three nights of night market. That doesn't mean that there's going to be. It also doesn't mean that it's going to be all year round. It's, it's a, it's allowed all year round. But it is not, it's barely going to be three nights a week. It's going to be possibly one night a week. But we. But we need to have the ability to be able to in the future. So to be able to have a night market. Night market also, just so you know. Cannot operate during the time that the El Matito currently operates. So El Matito has, as pointed out, five thirty A M. to six P M. So the night market has to start if it's going to go for. Is going to have to happen after six P M. So the time for the night market would have to be somewhere between six or seven P M. If proposed until eleven P M. Now, all of that area we've also provided for there to be lighted. Lighting that will not impact any adjacent properties. Both for the night market. Or the food court, as well as for the parking, is going to be allowed for those particular. All right, my time is up, but I just wanna tell you, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But I think that we have an answer for all of these questions. In our, in the conditions of approval that we've worked with staff over a period of time.
Thank you.
We do have sixteen pages of. Project. Just to point out that we did condition.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Closing the public, the public area is now closed. I'm bringing it back to the commission for discussion and questions. I have a question for staff. So the fee that is the applicant's collecting for the business license fee. Which was determined by the city council recently. Does that also apply to the food trucks? Or is that just for the vendors that is inside the, the market area?
It'll apply to the food trucks as well, they're considered a vendor.
Okay.
A gentleman asked a question, or had a concern about. Food trucks on gravel. Are these. This operates similarly to the hub hub we just approved whereby they would come and go each day? Cleanouts involved or anything?
Correct, and El Matito is converting a portion of their already paved parking lot? So this area is already surfaced.
Well, I was just concerned because. The other one is in the city limits where you've got a public war and a public sewer system. These are people out here on Wells, and that was my concern of Carol Lane's on Wells. So I was just.
Right, yes.
Differentiate between the two, thank you.
And this one is paved, yes.
That's the other question I have is my, I've got a lot of notes here, but focus on the one that hasn't really been addressed or isn't necessarily entirely clear. Hours and special events, and maybe that's the same question. What kind of special events? How often allowed, how long? Somebody summarize that.
I think the applicant Nelson can better summarize that.
Mr. Gomez, could you step up to kinda clarify what kind of special events you would be having?
I think that the, if you go back, if you go to conditions. Section B, B. W. That will give you. First of all, first paragraph. Finds what kinds of. Events such as Cinco de Mayo celebration, Mexican Independence Day celebration, Fourth of July celebration. Fashion shows, beauty pageant, open air concerts, auto and equipment auctions, and car show. But all of those kinds of especially. The, there is not going to be as. There's not a specific number of events that are in fact. West area, let's say. Twelve to fifteen. Reality is, is that they, given the use of the parking lot. El Matito, given that there might. Market. Be. One of the, or the quantity of special events that are going to take place there are not going to be very many in here. Fact that it doesn't require a special temporary use permit is because there is. Just worth of conditions that have to be met. So therefore. If there's a violation of one of the conditions. And the use is subject to be revoked. So what I'm saying to you. This particular requirements with regard to special. Is extremely detailed. It's extreme. It's detail as far as to planning, with regards to fire, with regards to. Government environmental resources and so forth. So forth, so there is going to be uh subject to many of those conditions. On top of subject to all state law with regards to business and professional code. Other reporting requirements that. Fires vendors. Make sure. Six hundred and forty-eight vendors that are requested. Only a hundred vendors more than what they are already allowed. And that hundred is, aren't the thirty trucks are part of that hundred. Food trucks have to, by this document, have to have business license. Only the other vendors that are in El Matito flea market will have to be. Two dollar per day per vendor requirement. The El Matito have agreed, pay the City of Series in view of business licenses. Those particular vendors. But all other requirements, even for those vendors, are having to comply. With the Department of Taxation of the State of California, as well as business code. Regulations, so that although those reporting requirements will have to be maintained by El Matito. Subject to the City of Series requesting. The reporting requirements from the El Matito management. City of Series.
Thank you for the clarification.
I ask just on the. Focus on noise, if, if I live on Carol Lane, which I do not, but. How often might I hear noise, is it directed toward me, away from me?
If I may, if I may, if you can put up site plan. Eight. Exhibit eight. That's the exhibit or the specialty. You make sure. Try to do everything. Not put a burden on the folks that live at Carol Lane.
I appreciate you taking the time.
That one, no, the one right before. That particular north section is, says site plan, that's the north. Where you see the exhibit. The. Electronic court, that's east. You can see the map, it says north, east, south. Carol Lane is directed south and north, northwest of the property. Any of the noise is directed southwest of the property. Where there are now orchards. So there, it's not even going to go towards the other area, but it's gonna be directed. Southwest direction. Also indicated in, in this that there has to be. A state required for. Noise control, that's why the D E's are in there and so forth. So we are trying to make sure that we are as responsible and have. Citizens that are going to be. Trying to be as. In, in a way to, to worry about the folks that are live around it and that we don't inconvenience, inconvenience them very often. Or hopefully. In a very, very small way when those particular.
This may be an unfair question to you, I'm not sure. Do you have an idea of the capacity of, to have an event? Keep in mind, for example, the Fruit Yard Amphitheater. Went into a quiet area. Had some impact. It's much smaller. This is much smaller, do you have a capacity estimate here?
Yes, sir. If you look at the site plan, this particular, this particular. Row that I'm giving you with detail, I don't know if you. The detail plan has the exact. Capacity, the exact capacity, four thousand two hundred and eighty-five people. You know, over a period, over, over an area exceeding sixty thousand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should point out that there's a requirement there for the type, amount of bars we have to have. Of restrooms we gotta have, the amount of other things, so everything has been thought about. Putting right into right. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think there's, there's a lot of different. Different things going on here, but. With the special events. I could understand like the ease of it, you make it easier to just have an event and not go through the whole process, things like that. But I feel there is a, could be a public safety concern as well. Each event, I assume, would bring a different amount of people. And when it goes through this permit process, I assume like the police department is informed. There isn't any surprise events, they're gonna know what's happening. And also, there are fees that are attached to this temporary use permit for every single time you have an event. So that goes away, and now there's no fees coming in to the city for every single event that can happen. That's pretty much what I have to say about the events. Especially temporary use permit.
I, I would agree, I would like to see for each event have a, must have a temporary. That be the proper language.
Yes, and we can require that in the.
I would like to do that.
So there was also another thing where the applicant. Looks like they might be able to request public safety department to provide extra police enforcement. They would, the full cost of such services shall be paid. By the applicant. I'm just wondering what kind of situations the applicant might be requesting public safety to now come out and kind of, I guess, act as security. I feel like our police department is already stretched thin right now. So looking at the amount of people that can be there at one time. I do have concerns about that.
So they already do that now, they request specific, or specific events such as Cinco de Mayo and some of the other festivities they have out there. And we already provide that now, that we're just not codifying that, so it's written in there. At any other special event that they may request, if we can provide it, then we will at our cost. And they have to re, reimburse us.
Okay, so it's like if it's pre-planned, I like that, okay, thank you.
There's no surprise pop-ups, it's all, all will be pre-planned.
Thank you.
As, as far as time goes. Says allow night markets, I know we've mentioned midnight, but page seventeen. Five says all sound systems, acoustic bands or amplified music shall be stopped at eleven P M. Does that follow our sound ordinance, or do they fall under city sound ordinance?
It does not follow the sound ordinance, so that's why they're requesting a different time.
So could we make them follow city, okay, I, I would recommend follow city sound ordinance. I mean, with, with surrounding homes there, that, that would be my recommendation. Music exceeding to the eleven to twelve o'clock hour.
I'm just trying to clarify what hours we're trying to focus in on.
Yeah, city staff can maybe.
Yeah, so they're asking to have music until eleven, and the ordinance for the city is ten P M.
So we're talking an hour. Okay, thank you.
That would be my recommendation, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel.
I think that's a good recommendation. Got any other comments? The issue of the noise.
Yes. I wanna make sure that it's stated that there'll be no amplified noise either for food truck. Food court, nor for the night market. That will not be. Only time that. A permissible have amplified sound would be only in special events. Would only be. Ten, eight, seven P M. With caveat that there is a decibel level that must be obtained in the residential property. All the other uses of that particular. Parcel will not require any noise. Will be all amplified noise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the other thing you can also consider is something what Santa Clara does, is Forty-Niner Park. They have eleven o'clock curfew at the end, if they go after eleven o'clock, then there's a penalty. They, they know they're gonna be turned off, so if some of the concerts go past that, then they pay a hefty penalty. You know, follow the.
Okay.
And they pay that regularly.
So I guess, how do we feel about, can, so can we. Motion, can we approve to. Reduce the eleven o'clock hour for special events? Or is that?
Yes, when you make the motion to approve the project, if that's the direction you wanna go, you can include. Your motion to approve. Approve includes the ten P M. for the vendor. Temporary use permit for every special event. And then ten P M. is the timeline. Amplified music.
And also, so they're also asking to operate up to three nights per week until eleven P M. So my understanding is. You could have night market Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night, and then you have the. During the day, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Took that, I, one of the commenters said that a lot of people nowadays work at night. Hey, well, that night market would be. Available for them to use, which I guess is probably part of the marketing on. By the proponents, so I, I look at that as a. To me is, have different lifestyles and different hours that we work.
Also, Madam Chair, listeners, I wanna thank Mr. Gomez, he worked a lot with us to make this happen, and. You know, there's a give and take in the negotiations on doing this. Answering your question of, you know, what we were looking at, the totality of it. Instead of having to come in for every single thing that he has to do now and get a temporary use permit. We're looking at the totality of bringing in a whole bunch of people that was gonna help us that, some of the costs. You know, what we made on temporary use permit will bring in people that would go into markets or somewhere to get food afterward or buying food there. That's gonna be going in our sales tax. That's why we did away with. Temporary use permit for every single. Every use permit for every single special event. That was negotiated. Uh, Mr. Gomez. I, but that, that was the thought process. Does that make sense? Okay.
Commission have any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I guess I'd make the motion to approve with required temporary permits for special events. Limit sound to ten P.M. or all the above. Was there, was there another one I had to add here, or is that, were those two?
Mobile food vendor court to end it.
Yeah. Yeah, the permits. Sound limit to ten P.M. Yep.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
May we get a roll call?
Commissioner Condit.
Hi.
Commissioner Dill Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Vice Chair Catchel.
Hi.
Chairperson Otero.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving along, there is no new business. Uh, public meetings, none, unfinished business, none, mash, matters initiated by planning commission and staff, none. Is there any reports from the commission? I don't have any reports from the city attorney or city staff.
Yeah, I, I wanna thank, uh, the applicant, Nelson Gomez, for including residents outside of feet of required radius. So I appreciate that very much.
Alright, the next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, this meeting is now adjourned.